So the public hearing tonight for the historic designation application is that we have received a request to designate one Depot Street, also known as the Corner Candle Shop, as a local historic landmark. The new Village of Washingtonville zoning laws gives the village board the authority to consider and decide upon the designation of local landmarks. The village, working with the land owner, potential tenant, village historian, and village planner, developed a narrative to supporting documentation regarding the history of the property for the village board to review. The documentation is on file with the village and available for review. Part of the process of designating a landmark is to hold a public hearing specifically notify the public, I'm sorry, the property owner that the designation is being considered. This has been done. We have to get additional testimony regarding the history of the property this evening. One public comment is received, the public hearing can be closed, but the village board will not act upon the application until it receives any comments from the Orange County Department of Planning, since the application is subject to their review under New York State General Renaissance law. So with that, we are hoping, and...
Any line now, so it's locked. What do you just read there? From my understanding from the last meeting when I asked, the owner of the property requested the hearing?
Requested in support of it, when we brought it to their attention, yes. And the property owner is considering it. Yes. So the process is if we're considering something, whoever is the property owner needs to be notified via email. And not only via mail, but a phone call. And then the owners have responded in an email in supporting moving forward with this historic designation.
Can we educate the public on what that entails? Like if he does get the designation as a historic property, how does that affect going forward?
Well, from the point of the village departments would be notified, planning, zoning, building department...
What stipulations are there on that building per se, once it gets designated, going forward, being a historic?
Can you answer, I'm sorry, Benny?
What stipulations? I know the building is per se.
Right.
So I was to purchase the building. What stipulations are there on said building that had that designation within the village?
So you're asking what kind of changes could be made to the building, given it has that designation? Is that what I'm hearing?
What stipulations or what restrictions are there? Yeah, basically, yeah.
Okay. Right, Tom, I'll let you answer that.
So the stipulations from the information we've received from the planning department and so forth is that there's no changes to the exterior of the building. And if there's anything that would be requested, it would have to come in front of the preservation historic board.
Which it was.
Yes. And the whole idea there is to obviously preserve what you have, so...
Just the exterior?
With the exterior. I'm not 100% sure on the interior pieces, but generally speaking, it's usually the exterior.
Is there any restrictions on what the business is?
That would relate to the zoning.
Gotcha.
I can tell you, this is not state historical designation, that is a different. This is just within the village. I do know, however, on a state level, when a building has historic designation, you're very limited as to what you can do to the exterior of the building. Generally, the inside can be, you know, updated and modified, but the outside must maintain that character. And in some areas, specifically the city of New York, if you're going to replace anything on the exterior, it must be similar or like materials.
Yes, sir.
I'm just curious why the board wanted to designate this building as a historic building? Because the exterior of that building you just talked about is really not that historic. It's all brand new.
Well, from the recent fire, yeah, the siding has been modified, obviously. But the interior structure of that building is original. The flooring's original, the beams are original, some rafters were replaced.
You just said you didn't know if it covered the interior.
No, it does cover the interior, but if there's a request for modification on the inside, that would need to be brought to the... I'm assuming, again, we haven't gone through this and we're still researching in detail, but like for the exterior, they would have to come in front of the board and ask for modifications to the outside of doing X. And the preservation board would be the ones to review what those people are looking for. So in a sense, in everything that we have received, the history of this particular building, I mean, it's really, I mean, it's super interesting. One gentleman, I can't remember his name, but he had like five of these buildings in this area. A few of them lost to fires over the years. This building, I think, at the end of the day, had maybe three fires. And then through the ownership changes, you know, the building has been maintained. And, you know, it's not only this building, but there's others within the village that we would also like to approach the owners to see if they would, you know, be in agreement to make it historic, to preserve it. Because the one thing we wouldn't want to lose is the historic value of this and have it knocked down for something else.
If it's a tear down, well, the property owner can't come in after this is declared and just knock it down and put up whatever the zoning would allow.
Yes, sir.
Just to address the comment, the siding that was replaced with the same material and style that was original to the building. Not even trying that, that the siding, but that would...
Okay. Can you state your name and so forth?
Richard Rattler, town building.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so without any other comments, could I have a motion or any comments from the board?
Now, we have to leave it open for something to...
Yeah. And so can I have a motion? Well, what we'll do is we'll keep the meeting open for any written comments. And as designated, we need to wait for the response from Orange County planning, which they said they would work on that quickly, so that'll be nice. So with that, can... Have a motion closing the meeting. Which is public hearing. Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
The other second portion of that is a resolution, which is part of the public hearing, so it's not a separate line on your budget. It's the resolution of to declare the Corner Candle Shop historic landmark application as a type 2 action. So whereas the village board of the Village of Washingtonville has received a request to designate one Depot Street, TAC map number, section block, lot 113, 3-4, also known locally as the Corner Candle Shop, as a local historic landmark, whereas an application has been prepared and is subject for public hearing being held on August 18, 2025, whereas further regulations set forth in 6-NY-CRR, Part 617, implementing the New York State Review Act, SEAKER, the designation of local landmark for their inclusion within historic districts is considered a type 2 action, which is not subject to SEAKER review. Now, for if it resolves or swam, SEAKER, the village board deems the application a type 2 action, and no further SEAKER review is required. Section 2, the village board hereby directs the village clerk to file a copy of this resolution and the village clerk's file. Section 3, the resolution shall take effect immediately. Questions of adoption of foregoing resolution is duly put to a vote on a roll call, which is in resulting. So, trustee Coleman? Trustee Zacharuso is on vacation, so that's a... Trustee Wolski?
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Presser?
Yeah.
May I repeat? Oh, yes. All right, thank you very much, everybody.
Now you look down.
Maybe the deck is in place. Trustee, I'll pass this over to you a little bit later. Thank you very much. All right. Moving into public comment on agenda items?
Sure. Sean, I agree. I have a couple. One is the catch basin maintenance. Are they going to repair or have they repaired any catch basins since, let's say, April? That's when they used to probably repair. They're in terrible shape, all of the villagers are sinking, the walls, the backs are coming in, dirt's flowing in the door.
I'd have to check and see. I can't, I'm not going to, I can't answer that question at the moment, but I'll find out. Our concentration right now, we're going to be on a couple of cul-de-sacs, Tower Hill and North Street, because those are in the process of being considered for paving, especially North Street. So, but what this is really all about is understanding that this is supposed to be done on a three-year cycle. So what we're going to do is prepare the map so that we can do a third of the village over the three-year period. And find out the best time to do that. And that would be cleaning them and repairing, if necessary, and documenting and taking pictures of the storm drains.
Well, I'm talking about since April. So it's from April to now where they were working. Did they do any since then? Water is flowing in the back of some of them on Ballard Pond, collapsing in other areas. Dirt's going into them, everything's going into them. Unless, you wonder why your ponds are filling up, it's because of lack of maintenance on them. Two on Bellwater Drive were sinking. Facts are coming in, they're going to collapse.
Okay.
So, I don't know why they don't see these or why nothing's done about it. I do know people have complained about it specifically, the two on Bellwater. It wasn't me, but some of the neighbors said they, they've done it.
Okay, I don't recall seeing any kind of a ticket on it, but if you have, or we'll check those out. We'll go down Bellwater and we'll look at them.
Be looking at the whole village, because they're...
Well, the whole village, yeah. I mean, that's the plan, that's the whole reason for the MS4 inspections.
It usually starts in March, they start repairing. I don't think, from walking around riding the bike right now, we see it, how you repair it?
No, because our thought is that we're going to make this a fall project into the winter, as late as we can. Because we're busy doing other spring projects, other summer projects, mowing the lawn, and it's maintenance stuff that just churns you away. I get, we understand that that needs to be done, and that's the reason it's on the agenda, because we had it for discussion at the last meeting, in discussing the MS4 issues when we brought in the engineer to talk about it. So we know it needs to be done. If people are aware of a drain as a problem, and like the IM Care System is online, put it in there, or otherwise, if, like you said, you know of two on Bellwater, we'll go and check them out.
And speaking of online, why was my information put online? When I asked you about Jimmy Forrest's salary, why is that on there?
Because I wanted, you asked for it to be mentioned at the meeting.
I asked for you to answer it.
I am.
I didn't ask for me. You have my information on it, do you not?
On what?
In other words, was on...
No, I didn't. I answered you via email.
Me?
Right, but you specifically asked for it to be noted in the meeting.
Right.
Right, but by the time I read this, it was Tuesday. I didn't read it on that Monday, because I didn't know it was there.
Two weeks ago. But why, I'm asking you, why is it online? Publicly online?
Where's it publicly?
Why is this incident report on the village website, on the documents? That's what he's asking.
It is. It is.
I don't know.
There's like 38 pages for...
Not online, but yeah, stuff comes up. Probably stuff that's not there.
Each in...
150,000...
This is what happened up in Alaska with Trump. They got physical with the printer.
You got your invoice on? The invoice, that's why. You're in Alaska.
That's the page right there.
The invoice from paging is on there?
Oh, no, I got the page, but I wasn't aware it said in documents. But if it is, we'll get it off. Shouldn't be there. Okay, give me a second, Sean, let me just make the note on Bellwater.
I'm going to do it, you're going to do it.
Pardon?
On Ballard Pond, they leave us two, all washed in from the back, third is probably...
Okay.
Bellwater, Ballard Pond, you said?
Yeah, yeah. They're all over the village, they're in both sides.
Well, 94, East and West Main Street, those we can touch, since state DOT, you have to touch them.
One of the firehouses in the bedroom.
Well, you're saying we can't touch those.
Well, I understand them, but I'm not talking about them. I know what you can and what you can't do.
So, but send me the streets, and I will personally drive over there with Chris and look at them.
You shouldn't need anybody to send you anything. These gentlemen are out riding around on lawn mowers, trucks, tractors, whatever they're on, but they're not observing anything. It's crazy.
That's under documents? Oh. Okay. We'll take a little bit of a shot, thank you. Anyone else? Paul?
I have a couple of things too, President. If you remember back when we did the IMA with the town for the building inspectors, I said then that they're getting paid in the town, and they were going to get paid here, and that's double dipping. And you guys said, "Well, there's an IMA, so it's not double dipping." And you use the IMA as a cue for nothing. I still don't understand that, I don't believe that. Now, you're going to approve Forrest's salary at $110 an hour. Is there an IMA here too? And if there's no IMA, why is this not double dipping? If he goes to, we're going to use him, you said we're going to use him for large projects. So he goes to a large project as an engineer, as the village engineer, and he looks at this project and he, whatever, you know, makes recommendations or whatever he does as an engineer, and then he puts his other hat on, the building inspector hat, and says, "Okay, you need to do this, this, this." And that's $110 an hour. Well, how is that not double dipping? He's getting paid as an engineer.
He gets paid an engineer to do an engineering job. We appointed him as a building inspector, as a backup, if it ever became necessary, to back up Tam, if it was ever necessary. And potentially, the only time we really see that happening, maybe would be a very large project.
You said only large projects, yeah.
Maybe? So at the end of the day, in a penmanship, there was an issue with town being here, or something needing to be reviewed, we have the ability now to approach him and ask him to do it as a building inspector, not as the engineer.
And it's a title, I don't understand. You know, you're getting paid as an engineer for that job, and now you're getting paid again as a building inspector.
We're just designating it so it's more understandable, because an engineer automatically is qualified to be a building inspector. You don't have to go to school, you don't have to do any of that stuff. So we're just designating the difference between engineering and building. Now, engineering, of course, is doing the roads, and sewer, and water, and those types of things, which happen all the time. The other piece of it, again, is if Aurora Chemical needs to do something, and we wanted his expertise from an engineering slant, but he's the building inspector, giving him the authority to look at something. We don't expect, we're not using it on a daily basis. We might not even use it until...
I still can't understand. I wish somebody could understand and explain to me how that, something like that, is not double dipping. You're getting paid...
Double dipping from where? Double dipping is if you're doing something for me, and I'm giving you, I'm paying you as a building inspector, and I'm paying you at the engineer at the same time. That's double dipping.
That's what I just said.
Well, we're not doing that. He's either going to, he's either going to be officially doing the job as an inspector, or he's going to be doing it as an engineer.
If it's the same project, it's the same, basically the same time. I don't, I really can't understand it. I can't wrap my head around this at the moment.
Who's paying him? At one point, you said it would be whoever is inspecting. So if he's inspecting, that person, well, he's doing engineering for us, isn't that double dipping? If he's going to build the other people?
Yeah, well, kind of, it's double dipping, guys.
Well, it's easy enough to figure out.
It is easy, but I don't understand...
We don't... Well, if you're getting, doing...
Just look at two different jobs. Say Jim wasn't the person, and we hired Paul. So now you're the building inspector.
Okay.
All right, and you have, and you're an engineer by trade.
Oh, now, so, now that's double dipping?
Well, double dipping is if I'm paying you $100 an hour, plus $120 an hour. So now I'm paying you $220 an hour.
That's not what you're doing here?
No, no. You're either going to be engineer, or you're going to be building. And building, again, is a last resort if the building department might be unavailable for whatever. That's it, simple.
It was stated here that...
Say it's even a deck, say it's even a deck. We're not going to, why would I spend... And again, it's the situation if they're available. We don't expect any of this stuff to happen. It's a backup of just knowing that we could utilize that if we need to.
I get it. At one point, you stated, if he's our engineer, he's on a project, he's getting paid from us. But if he's also the building inspector, the builder pays him. So what if that goes on? The builder pays him to inspect, and we're paying him to be an engineer. That is not double dipping? If he's looking at it at the same time?
Do you think he's getting paid $120 an hour, eight hours a day?
Well, that's the other question.
No.
It started out from $100, then it went to $110, and then it's up to $120, you stated. What is his true salary?
His salary as an engineer is $120, as building inspector is $110.
It was originally 100.
No, I think I stated at last meeting incorrectly at 120.
But when he first got hired, the first, when he first hired him, you stated it was 100 an hour.
As an engineer?
As a building inspector.
No, I think I misquoted it.
Well, maybe you misquoted, but it's still, that's confusing, all these different numbers you're throwing at me. 100, 110, 120. Who has gotten 10% raise? Not the police, not the DBW, not nobody in this office. You guys got more than the 10% raise, but you go from 100 to 120, that's a 20% increase.
It's what the going rate is for those type of positions. Go call an engineering firm and ask them what they pay for building inspectors, and what it would be. Call Titanic, call Langton Toll, tell them I need an engineer, I want him to be a building inspector.
Okay.
And see what the numbers are. They're well over that amount.
That's all right, but you keep on changing the numbers. You're never clarifying it.
Engineer is 120, building inspector is 110.
That's the first time I've heard it clarified.
That's it.
It was always, what, building inspectors get? 110, 100, 120? You said 110 earlier, now it's 120 for the engineer. We never stated separate things, now it's a separate entity.
It was always separate, because he's an engineer.
You never stated that.
And I thought we were pretty clear at the last meeting when we spoke about it. When we did the appointment, or the one before, when we did the appointment, that it was as building inspector, had nothing to do with the engineering piece. That's totally separate. So when he does something engineering, double dipping to me would be, all right, we're out on North Street the other day with a contractor, and I'm paying him $220 an hour. To me, that's double dipping, because I'm paying you for two positions. We're not. We're paying him for an engineering hours.
My second question was on number one, the MS4 catch basins, once every three years, did you ever determine when the last time we did them was?
Uh, no, I did not.
Probably more than three years, much more than three years.
Be my guess. I really, going through documentation, nothing jumped off the page. And I could either go to H2M, because they were involved for a while, or I could go to the other firm, which is, um, the Ravage Ocean.
Ted Teague, pumps do it.
No. Can't think of that name.
Ted Teague do it. He used to live on Bellwater, around the corner. He had a back truck, he did one of them.
And that was my other point on it, thank you. On the back of the vacuum, or the truck we have, has a vacuum. I know they did, you know, if there was a problem, they utilized that. That's one of the reasons we got that truck, is that it did have the vacuum on the back.
It has a vacuum, but it's not a vac truck, it's not a hydro.
I know it's not a back truck, but it was used to clean the storm drains.
Yeah, but it's not an everyday use type thing, because that will, it won't last. It's not as powerful as it needs to be. It's not a vac truck. It's a vacuum to clean out stuff, but it's not, it's not what you need to do the storm drains.
Do we have any plans, plans to start this maintenance, this regularly scheduled maintenance?
Yeah, we're planning on starting in the fall of this year. Yep. And the plan, again, is to do a third, and a third, and a third. And to take the pictures catalog and make sure, because it's documentation that's needed for the MS4 reporting, which goes to DUC. So it's a requirement that we have to follow up.
I hope they take pictures, because I wish they would have taken a picture of them flushing the hydrants at my house. You were here when that was going on, because it was never done.
Okay. Well, we have no problem going over there and turning it on. Justin said it wasn't done, but I could ask Justin for the documentation.
He said, he claimed that it was done, and I claimed that he was... One of us is not telling the truth. I know, I see on camera, and I was, I lived there, there most of the day, all day, and...
Was it a given day?
Yeah, it was a Wednesday, it was a Wednesday, I think, March, I want to say March 31st, something. Why did that just come into my head?
I don't know.
No, but it just, yeah, so it was a Wednesday. But they put it, you posted them on, online for the Patriot Lane, Cumbria Court, yada, yada, yada. On this day, we're going to flush hydrants. From when you were gone, Jeff Donner or whoever said that they would, he said that they were done. Okay.
Because I checked with the...
I can do it.
He said personally did those.
Huh?
I checked with Justin.
I know, yeah, he says that. And I mean, if you remember the days when you used to flush those hydrants, somewhere in the village, you saw water in the street. You know, you drove around the village, you didn't see any water when you were flushing hydrants, so I don't know. You could have did a dry flush.
Any other?
No, I'm good.
Hi, Beth, how are you?
I'm good.
How are you? Oh, David.
Just one quick, I'm running low. Somebody, I'm about to get to the MS4, the 4th, third-party company on my block, on the block. Looks like they've pulled holes in pavement down blocks, or snake it something.
Yeah.
Oh, cameras.
Uh, that was...
They did a shitty patch job, and I'm going to just left the pavement, lose pavement up there.
Yeah, because our plan is to get that stuff paved. The problem is, we brought this up at the last meeting, needing to do four samples, because we weren't quite sure... Yeah, you're doing four samples. Anybody else? So I think we've covered the MS4 pretty well. If anybody has anything else, feel free to ask or email. So just some facts about the water usage that we use in this village. It was kind of surprising, asking people of how many gallons we use a day. Some people were saying like 100,000, maybe 200,000. On any, any given day, a rough estimate is between 4 to say 600,000 gallons a day. So take that, and for a month, and we're 8 million gallons. And yeah, a million is being hauled out of sewer plant area for the water-holing companies that's been there in Tam and the mine.
And there's a couple of the little companies that come in.
And then we had some odds and ends, little companies that come in, they have, I don't know...
Mobile wash.
Mobile wash type of guy, and somebody else. But they're all being billed. We actually set all of these vendors up into our admin system for water and sewer billing. Obviously, there's no sewer involved, but at the end of the day, when we get the report of how many gallons were used, we are now producing bills out of the water system and sending them off to the, off to the vendors, so we can keep track of this stuff better than it was previously. And yeah, it was kind of interesting just talking about it and asking people, having a thought and an idea of how much water we actually use. And so, yeah, it's approximately 8 million a month, 8 million gallons. Regarding the graffiti at the Fireman's Memorial, that graffiti has been taken care of. It's also my understanding, we're not too much detailed, the war, couple of arrests of some people. So that's moving forward. Um, so that's moving forward, and, you know, really nice job by our new detective who brought that to closure. So the department's doing really well there. Um, response to the questions regarding the building inspector. Um, I'm not sure if there's anything else that wasn't answered. But I just wanted to bring it up, because it was your request, and so I think everything we discussed has been answered. And that to the side. And Orange County Department of Health led a copper survey letters to the residents. We were required to send out a letter to the homeowners that have lead and homeowners that have galvanized. And about ninety-nine letters went out to homeowners who have not responded to us to advise what they have in the home. And if they have trouble either locating here, knowing how to do what we were asking to do, they just need to call the village hall, and we'll set up an appointment, and send our teams over there to investigate what type of pipe is coming through your, uh, your foundation. It's important, because again, this is another EPA, New York, D E C, and Orange County Department of Health regulation, so it's, uh, something that needs to be handled.
More of these ones pushing the county.
Yeah, yeah. So all that is in progress, we'll keep you updated on that. Um, New York State Department Environmental Conservation Resilient Program focuses on water courses flood studies. So, uh, New York State will be doing a survey of along the Moon and Stream of potential flooding issues. And they're gonna start off with a kickoff meeting in next week, I believe, or the week after, August twenty-sixth. So we'll be on that call to be part of the study and what has happened and transpired in this village, with all the flooding issues we've had over the years. So we'll be sure to be throwing our hat into that ring and make sure that they hear us and understand what our flooding issues really are here. So we'll keep you updated on that as well. Water replacement on the meters for the high school, middle school, and Tapt Elementary, Susan.
So they did the high school, which was a compound four inch meter, and that has been replaced. We had, had to, the middle school needs to repair their valves before we can change that meter. And Tapt is a three inch meter that we have to special order.
Thank you. Um, any estimate on how many meters we've replaced, on top of what?
Three hundred and twenty.
Three twenty. Good. Great. Uh, let's see, also for, um, we have applied for a New York State grant for sidewalk construction from a village parking lot on West Twenty-Nine West Main Street, which would then give us access into Sewell Park. Um, we think that area is, that sidewalk is obviously needed for safety. We don't want anybody walking in the road, you know, families, baby carriages and all that, all that stuff. So at the end of the day, um, we have to get this application in by September fifth. So we'll be working on that, uh, this week and get that done and completed. Working with the engineers, the estimated cost is in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For sidewalk that way. So we'll keep you posted on that as well. As usual, the Orange County DMV unit will be here on August twenty-ninth, from ten to twelve, and then one to three. For anything you need water vehicle wise, and, uh, obviously no written exams. Okay? Um, start to talk about, mentioned a little bit, the, uh, North Street drainage and paving. We met with ATEC, they're the contractor that will be doing the drainage work. And we met with them last week to just do logistics, traffic, and their process of bringing in their inventory of pipes and things that need to be stored, which will probably be on Woodfield from Ahern, uh, to Woodfield Park along the curb line. And then, um, they could be starting, if everything lines up on their side, they could start doing drainage work, uh, in the middle of this week. And if that happens, our plan is to shut down North Street, so it can be an easier, uh, work area and safety area for the guys that are doing the work. Traffic will be rerouted up Brotherhood to then make a left on Ahern and north on Tomlin Road. So we'll keep you, again, updated on that. We've already spoken to the, uh, contractor who does the paving. So they're in the loop of what's going on, timelines and all that good stuff, so that they'll be, uh, ready to get in and pave, so, um, hopefully there's no kind of delay of in between doing that and getting it paved. Okay? Anything else?
I have a question on that, Tom. Are they gonna straighten out the drainage at Ahern in North Street?
Yes.
That will be taken, but that's-
Yeah, that drainage area-
Very bad place in the west.
Yeah, that's gonna be handled.
Alright.
Yep. We're actually gonna put a drain on that side, and then there'll be pipe going into that, into that, uh, catch basin right there in the corner. To catch that water, it's all coming off the hill from the cemetery.
It always was, but it was only the drain before they-
Yeah, yep.
Mr. Line, just packing the car.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, and calculation, and when they did Ahern, they came down beyond that catch basin, and they raised it, obviously, and prevented that normal flow of water into the basin. Right. So that is, that's on the list. As well as curbs, damaged sidewalks on North Street, all that stuff is, is in the queue to be replaced. If you're walking down the street and you see two, two arrows, white arrows facing one another, that section of street, or the sidewalks, is due to replacement.
Alright.
Okay? Any other?
Yeah, but- Just one question, uh, the sidewalk, um, part of the Sewell Park, you have private home too, you have a good spot?
Yep.
And that, is that, is easy to allow, just the building to-
Yep, there's a right away, DOT right away, that will be utilized. Unfortunately, a couple of big, I don't know, almost, almost passed away dead trees will be part of that half to go, because it's right there.
Actually, the homeowner wants it, the property on a-
Oh.
Yeah, and if we did anything, then then, maybe part of the project, if there is money left over, we could put a couple of, you know, trees along the sidewalk area, make it nice.
And one other point about the park, I noticed that the signs are gone, as well as the truck. Signs that were-
Well, we took the signs down, because that, they really shouldn't have been there, right? At the end of the day, and I think they might be on vacation, so-
It's not a fact that they came along, right?
No, it's not that they were managed. Yeah, we, we called them and told them where the, the signs were, so we didn't want them to think they were stolen.
They're actually very nice people, the owner of that truck.
Yeah. So a bit there. Uh, let's see, okay, so we can move into resolutions then. Uh, see, first resolution is twenty-five zero one four three, approve a million paving. Uh, Potomac, Tower Hill, Bristol, and, and from Silicon Paying, I'd course not to exceed two hundred fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. And this is all contingent on what's left over after we're finished with North Street.
And they have chip money.
And we have chip's money coming back, but that'll be all, all calculated in, so it could be all three, it could be maybe one or two. The cul-de-sacs are in, in really, really bad shape, so we'll keep you updated on that. Um, you have a motion, please?
Motion.
Steve on the motion, second on the running. Questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Question, pass it, Steve?
I'm sorry, four zero, four zero zero one.
So that didn't matter. Next resolution, twenty-five zero one four four, to approve James Farb, building inspector's salary of one hundred and ten dollars per hour, effective Monday, August eighteen, twenty twenty-five. Motion?
Motion.
Steve, second?
Second.
Susan. Questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero one. Thank you. Next resolution, twenty-five zero one four five, to declare surplus of no value to the village of Washingtonville, following Department of Public Works equipment attached. Eighty-one through eighty-nine, four forty-six, ten tractor, number B C I four nine three five, model number D A three one four C. The unit number is nine G I four D. Woods three-point mower, model R M dash nine zero, serial number seven four two one, and Triumph Hydro Clipper, model number D twenty-five seventy-eight. You have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion, Steve, second on Vernon. Questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Question, passes Steve? Four zero one. Resolution twenty-five zero four six, to appoint Lydia Maragon to the position of full-time police officer upon the recommendations of Police Chief Ryan Zaccaro, in contingent upon successful medical psychological testing in the Orange County Civil Service approval, starting salary would be fifty-seven thousand one hundred and six dollars. Have a motion? Steve, second on Vernon. Questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, four zero one. Resolution twenty-five zero one four seven, to appoint Anthony Earl to the position of full-time police officer upon the recommendations of Police Chief Ryan Zaccaro, in contingent upon successful medical psychological testing in Orange County Civil Service approval. Starting salary will be fifty-seven thousand one hundred and six dollars. Have a motion?
Motion.
And a second, please?
Second.
Second on Vernon, question, comments? Motion, uh, I'm sorry, everyone in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero one. Resolution twenty-five zero one four eight, to approve public assembly permit for the Monell Engine Company car show. Fundraising to be held at Burn Allen Park on Sunday, September seventh, from nine AM to three PM. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Susan? Questions, comments, all in favor? Motion passes four zero one. Resolution twenty-five zero one four nine, to approve facilities. Use, uh, request warrant for the Kiwanis of Washingtonville Pumpkin and Hung Sale to the Adult and Veterans Square at Twenty-Nine West Main Street on Sunday, September twenty-first, from six thirty AM to four thirty PM. Said resolution is based upon receipt of their certificate of insurance. Motion? Second?
Second.
Susan, any questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero one.
We need saving the good yellow ones.
Resolution twenty-five zero one five zero, to approve public assembly permit for the Washingtonville Event Committee yard sale on September thirteenth and Sunday, September fourteenth, at nine AM until five PM. And approve the Harvest Market to be held on Sunday, September fourteenth, from nine AM until three PM. You have a motion?
Motion.
Steve, second? Vernon? Any questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero one. Resolution twenty-five zero one five one, the authorized budget transfer than amendments as necessary to effect the necessary transfers of funds and to pay the village mortgage. Have a motion?
Motion.
Steve, second? Vernon? Questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero one. The- So coming out of the A fund these two weeks is fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. And out of- And then coming out of the water is three thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And coming out of the sewer is a hundred and twenty thousand four eighty-seven. So. So that brings us to a comment on another agenda. Yes?
Uh, Paul Lang, again, three things. Uh, number one, I'd like to see the, the board pass a resolution, uh, offering their condolences to the Figueroa family. Any former trustee, Eddie Figueroa lost his wife, Doris, one fifteenth. So maybe it's something you want to consider.
Yeah.
Services on Wednesday, quarter eight at, uh, Ferguson, mass on Thursday. And, uh, that's one. Number two is, uh, can you schedule a, a September budget, quarterly budget meeting for one of the September meetings for us? We do it in September, one or the other. And, um, I know Bill probably wanted to ask this, but can you hit the level a little well? I'm sorry? Can we get the level a little well?
Um, let me see if I can have a response. They were at twenty-three, close to twenty-four.
It was like twenty-three, seven, or something like that?
Twenty-four, two.
Alright.
Twenty-two, four, two.
Because we gained, I think.
What's that?
Because we had a weak game there.
I know, with a little bit of rain. That was good, well, maybe, uh, hurricane, I'm looking at some weather, yes, sir.
Hey, I, uh, just got one. Go back to the graffiti at Fireman's and Water.
Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming it was a juvenile that played this graffiti. Um, maybe the board should consider concurrently going after the parents, suing for damages. Just in case the courts, family court's like a revolving door, sometimes you do it, sometimes you don't, and we don't get the restitution. Maybe we should start going after the parents of the juveniles that commit these stupid acts and costing money for the taxpayers for the restitution.
It's interesting to check out, because recently I've seen on the news, some municipalities in Jersey are doing that.
New York State law allows it, and it's been done, municipal has done it, several municipalities in the area have done it.
Hmm.
What is it, New York Obligations Law, three dash one twelve?
What's law?
New York Obligations Law, three dash one twelve.
And I know it's done a lot in other states, particularly in the south.
I have a statue for it.
Huh, okay.
Maybe concurrently, it'll, it'll void itself out if we get the restitution from the courts. But family court is like, you know, flipping a coin. But it would put the, you know, parents on notice, start watching the kid.
Yeah. What was I watching this morning, too? Chick-fil-A, someplace? If you're, uh, you're going in there, or your children, they can't go in by themselves, they've gotta be, uh, accompanied by an adult.
It's like the galleria.
Till the age of, I don't know, it's pretty hot, like eighteen or something.
The galleria has, but they just don't enforce it like they used to.
So, yeah. We'll check that out then, thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Anyone else? Yes?
I have a lot of things, Tom. Uh, what is the stormwater management? If you take a walk around, and you look in the outflows and ditches along the sidewalks, phone drive, there's water from, uh, Washington all the way almost to under Ahern by ninety-four, because it's so blocked. There's stones in there, there's stone in the water, some kids are gonna get sick from that, because it's not being cleaned out properly. Washington is new-
To where? To the- Washington to where?
Almost, uh, Ahern, where it goes out under the three holes. It's dry at a certain point there, because the blockages stop. But some kids are gonna get sick playing in that water, there's kids in that water all the time. The kids are, the ponds are polluted. And you're gonna cut down trees and say you got a beautiful, beautiful scummy pond. That makes no sense. Fix the ponds. The pump's not working, there's a lot of stuff. Um, that definitely needs to be cleaned out properly. They need to open that book, the stormwater management, you know, Chris is the manager of the DPW. He needs to read the chapters on it, what time of year it gets done, what he needs to do, the equipment he needs to use.
Nigel, we're with you, and that's all changed quite a bit. Um, he has his responsibility, he has some responsibility. I'm the coordinator, I have responsibility. It's a huge, huge thing.
It's, it's even bigger, because it hasn't been done properly in fifteen, ten years, probably.
Long, long time, so-
The last one to-
And it's already getting worse, like you said at the last meeting. They, they are putting the onus on the municipality, I mean, to, to do everything at the end of the day. The reporting of it, my MS four book is on my desk right now. It's this thick.
But don't use it as a doorstop.
No, it's on my desk, I try to go to sleep with it, and I, you know, get, get, read a chapter or two here and there, and it's good sleep time. But it, and, and aside, it's, it's super detailed, and, and that's why you need an engineering firm. Or if you were a big city, you'd have a person doing this, they do, matter of fact. You go to Newburgh, or any of these larger cities, they have departments that are MS four. That's all-
They have departments that are MS four. That's all they do.
So, we don't have that, but we still have it done right.
Sean, Tom, I went to about six different classes given by the DC on MS four. And it was filled with engineers. It was filled with planning board members. It was filled with town and village board members. And every single person walked out of all these informational classes scratching their head.
Okay, it's got to be done. Some of the other things is Lincoln Drive, cement work over there. Has anything been done about it? Sidewalks?
We're actually going to give that till spring because what we think happened to that concrete was salt. Looks like salt.
I would say the gentleman used too much water making this concrete.
Well, if he did it, we would think then it would be a little bit more all over. It's just uncertain areas where there could have been a pile of rock salt and it caused that pitting. So, we're going to give it till spring to see because the underside of that is harder than a rock. So, you know, what, the contractor's totally on board with this. If we decide we need something replaced, he'll do it.
Okay.
So, mark your calendar. We'll look at it in the spring.
The, you were talking about historic plaques. The Erie Depot plaque has never been done, which I brought up. Chris said, stated, "I only do what I'm told to do." And I guess you guys never told him to take care of it.
Our historian went and surveyed them, and he did the ones that the historian requested he done.
Okay. So, when I grew it up, have you guys stated that all the historic plaques were done? That one was never done. It still hasn't been done.
Is it existing? Were you saying there's no plaque there at all?
It's there.
It's there by the...
You mean, just refinishing it?
It hasn't been refinished. That's a year and a half ago now.
Okay.
Do we have to have TD look at it?
Well, we'll just take it off. It's there. It just needs to be painted, ground down.
Or it's a venture project.
Skateboard park, any update on that?
Pardon?
Any update on the skateboard park?
Well, yeah, we've actually talked to a different, a couple of different, I'll call them manufacturers or vendors. And we've been waiting for their renditions of what they will fit in that space. And we, you know, we keep hounding them, but we just haven't received what the...
Quite a little bit at a time, just like you did after pickleball courts.
Yeah.
And did the other...
Well, our plan was to do half, half of that thing, basketball, because there's been a call for basketball. And the other half was going to be the skateboard.
They're still working on that.
Yep.
You're going to be, but this is a small project for these kind of skateboard companies. This, we're not, you know, high on their priority list, so to speak?
Well, the other one was put together by Philly residents. It was all put together by us.
And they're manufactured much differently these days.
Well, probably it's smaller, but...
Yeah.
And then the electrical work at Burn Allen, is there anything being done with that conduit? They're driving over it, backing the truck over it with chips in it and dumping the chips?
Yeah, that's all going to be taken care of when they run the conduits for cameras.
You said they weren't going to drive over it. The fire drives all right where it is.
Okay.
So, they should drive around it.
And, okay.
And I think that's it for me. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, one more thing. He said something that brought it to... Did you ever contact the guy for the fountains in the pond?
Yeah.
Are they cleaned out or what?
No, the problem is, is that the only way that they take care of them is with chemicals.
Okay, so, going back, going back a number of years, the fire department used to go down there and do water rescue training. While we were out there, for us, they cleaned the bottom of the thing. Is there any possibility you can go to the fire department, to Monell, and maybe do a water rescue training again and clean the bottom of that thing and get it working?
Good question. I don't recall. I don't know at the moment, to be honest with you, if they have an active diving team. But we did buy...
You can invite Salisbury Mills or somebody.
Yeah, huh. Good idea, too. I don't know, do we? Do you know?
We have white suits that we can wear.
Yeah.
But as long as, it's got to be, I don't know how deep it is.
Five feet, six feet.
As long as you can walk on it. We have a small boat that we can use to...
Yeah.
I'm not concerned. We don't have school routine, we don't have that.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
Five feet, six feet, so...
Going to give him a belt, a diving hat. Him and Joe. Cool.
But that's a, you know, it's an idea. Get him out there and get him out there in a ramp. They did it. They did it. Seem to do it all the time. I guess when they do, two times.
Speaking of that, Chief, do you have access to a boat? You know, it's, you know, flat bottom boat?
Police department?
Yeah. Is there anybody out there that...
For our ponds, we would just call the fire department.
You know what?
The shares of farm is a boat, but it's a bigger boat for like, we have a lake, it's a river.
All right.
It's just more like a ten or twelve-foot flat bottom.
I'm going to talk to the chief. The issue with this is, is that our pumps float. When I first heard about it, I thought it was something that was submersible, that was sitting towards the bottom. These things float on the top. The weeds are growing up, and then they get sucked into the intakes of the pumps. We actually have something now, and I saw it in three different places, where they, it's a weird-looking thing, almost like an umbrella, but when you flip it the other direction, and it has blades on it. And what they do is they have a rope, twenty-five feet or whatever, and it's aluminum. And they throw it out there and they, and it sinks a little bit, and they pull it, and it cuts the weeds. And I've seen them in Cornwall, you know, the village of Cornwall, that lake they have down there. So, we have the tool. We just need a boat to get out there and pull it. So, you may have talked to the chief and see if that's something...
And we just signed an IMA with Monroe and use one of those, we got a pond in the hole.
We've been calling those guys and we asked them about the boat.
That thing's amazing.
But they haven't used theirs either. Their fountains aren't running. It's, you think ours look bad?
I know they were dredging it for a while.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Theirs don't look that great. And maybe that's what they were doing, was dredging because on the side of that particular one lake is, was these huge...
Yeah, they're gone.
Things are gone. So, I don't know if that was, they, when they dredged it, I don't know.
That was our first phone call of any.
Yeah, but we know the guy very well. They, you know, we've done stuff with them before. And I know they had that paddle, they could boat. And we wanted to either ask them to come and, you know, run it across our ponds. But we've just been miscommunicating. We just haven't heard from them. So, we've been trying, but, you know, we have access to a boat if we get that boat or even Salisbury.
So, we are taking donations of six hundred and a half flat bottom boats. If anybody would like to step up out there.
Okay. We just make a note of that. Okay. Anybody else? Yes, Luna, did I have any motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second? Anyone in favor?
All right.
Thank you very much. You're coming, everybody. Have a good night.
Night.
Careful out there.
Have a good night.
Yes, I know.
I don't know. It wasn't about it.
Those hills will flat also.
Going on any coordination or no?
No, I said, now, two weeks, you must have all found it.
I think they all, everyone. My bell has been ringing. I'm good. I'm tired today, but I'll hold on there.
It's over.
Thank God. Camera, are you good? I wish, I know you're busy.